And you guys are live.
Good morning, everyone. Today is July 2nd, 2025 at 11:00 a.m. Today is the East Hampton Village Board Meeting, but it's actually our organizational meeting. So if we could stand for a pledge and we'll get right into it.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands on our nation, under God, in this world, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thanks. I have a few announcements. First, I'd like to start off with wishing everybody a happy 4th of July. It's gonna be a busy weekend. It's already started, so everybody be safe. We're gonna have, we're not having our normal board meeting on the 3rd Friday this month. It'll be July 30th. It'll be our end of, uh, end of year meeting since the village fiscal year starts August 1st. Tuesdays at Main was a kickoff last night, and it was well attended, and, and I have a couple of videos I wanted to play. Because if you haven't come out to it, you really should come out. It's such a nice family event that, um, it's really something everybody should come see. So can we play the first video?
Sure.
Without this individual, so if I can ask the mayor, Jerry Larson, to come up and say a few words. And also the trustees for the village, they really are unbelievable, and thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Brad. Welcome, everybody. This is the official kickoff of summer. And we actually started this five years ago. And as I, when I grew up here on Main Beach, they used to have the fireworks on Saturday nights, Saturday night of 4th of July weekend. And it really, uh, as a kid growing up here, we had great memories here on the beach. So when I became mayor, I thought it would be really special if we could create an event where we could have families and kids all here and make some really great memories. So I really want to thank you all for coming. I want you to enjoy it. We're doing 10 of these for the rest of the season, so enjoy it. I want to thank our fire department, thank the police department, thank Drew Smith and all our lifeguards. And of course, I want to thank Brad. Well, let me back up. I want to thank the Talk House and Nick Kraus for organizing our bands. And I want to thank Brad for bringing this to the next level over the last four years. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, everybody.
Anyway, it was a great, it's a great night. And that video they actually put together by, uh, Marcos, who's was that video?
He's 27 creative.
He's 27 creative. They did that, and it, uh, it, that was actually from last night, so it was a lot of fun. And, uh, we, I do want to make an announcement that we will be changing the parking for the next nine concerts. There'll be no parking on any of the streets. Once the parking lots are full at Main Beach, that'll be it. There'll be nobody allowed up after that, and there'll be no parking on the streets, which will be enforced by the police department. So if everybody could get there early, the doors open at 5:00, so you're welcome to come up anytime after 5:00 o'clock. All right. Brad, would you mind just stepping up and announcing other events that the foundation's bringing for the, uh, for the village?
Hi, Brad, I'm Bill from the East Hampton Village Foundation. Um, this summer, we have a lot of different events. Obviously, Tuesdays at Main, we start off with in the beginning of the week. We also have yoga on Thursday morning at 8:30 at Main Beach. On, uh, Friday, we have the farmer's market in Herrick Park. We also have a free workout in Herrick Park, uh, right next to the farmer's market at 11:30. And then on Saturday morning, we have yoga again at Main Beach. Uh, a couple of other things is that we do have the flock cameras working, which we donated to the village. Um, there is a ring of security around East Hampton Village, so everyone should know that. Uh, the police department gets notified every time either a wanted car or a car that has some issue or the person driving that car has some issue relating to that car. And in fact, the police department has made over, uh, two dozen arrests in the last 60 days since this has been deployed. So East Hampton is the safest village on Long Island without a doubt because of our great police department and some of the technology that the foundation has brought to the village. And I want to thank both the mayor and all of the trustees for all the support that they've given to the foundation and allowing us to, to give these free, uh, events everywhere. All of the events, Tuesdays at Main, the yoga, the workout are all free to anyone, uh, that wants to come out. Uh, if they do go to the farmer's market and they buy anything, that's on them, not on the foundation. So just letting you all know that. Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, I just want to thank not just Brad, but the, the board of the East Hampton Village Foundation that really stepped behind this purchase. It's a very big purchase with a long-term commitment that they've, they've committed to doing this for the next five years. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Brad. So the purchase cost was for the cameras, how much?
Uh, $30,000 each year.
So it's, the original price was $30,000 to install them all?
The original price was a little bit higher than that, and the foundation negotiated with.
All right, so the original purchase price was $30,000.
Yeah.
And the annual subscription to keep them up and running is $30,000.
Yeah.
But thank you very much.
Just to clarify, the foundation doesn't have anything to do with monitoring this. It's the police department. So we're just talking about the donation.
Yes, the donation itself and the, and the commitment to pay it each year.
Yep. All right. So, uh, that's that. Pledge, can we do roll call?
Mayor Jerry Larson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi.
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez.
Here.
Trustee Carrie Doyle.
Here.
Trustee Sarah Amadon.
Here.
Administrator Marcos Baladron.
Here.
And village attorney Lisa Pirlo is on her way.
Great. One other, one other quick announcement that, uh, the deputy mayor just reminded me of. Our annual, uh, fire department's fireworks will be held on August 16th this year. So we'll, and we'll make further announcements, but just in case anybody's looking for them on 4th of July, they are not being held on 4th of July. They'll be held on August 16th. Next year, we will be holding them on the weekend of the 4th of July to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the, uh, United States. So our lawyer is here now. So now that we've stalled, we'll get started. All right, so we did roll call. We'll add, our attorneys here, and now we'll start with Hugh for the presentation.
Uh, in continuing our history of police chiefs, I'm going to talk about Randall Saris today. I had a difficult time finding a lot of information about Randy. Uh, I did talk to Todd, his brother. Uh, he served on a, uh, an ammunition ship in the Vietnam War. In 1968, 69, he joined the village police. He rose to the, um, office of detective, then detective sergeant. And he was the chief in 2001 to 2003. In 1970, he became the WLNG Police Officer of the Month. And then the Southampton Kiwanis Club named him Department Officer of the Year. And, uh, something that's unprecedented, um, his brother was the town police chief, and he was the village police chief. Uh, I don't think that's ever happened before. Okay? And the other thing I want to talk about is Hook Windmill, Hook Windmill is open. Okay? It'll be open every day, Monday through Sundays, Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Sunday, 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. And you know, when the village purchased the Village Green in 1922, they purchased that as a memorial to the men and women who served in World War I. Along with it came the Hook Windmill. And at, in the Hook Windmill at that time, Mrs. Demarest had a shop, and she was selling things out of the Hook Windmill. Now, the Hook Windmill is said to have been built by Nathaniel Dominique V. Not quite. He designed the mill. He did a lot of work on it, but who went to Gardner's Island and picked up the lumber over there and brought it down to Fireplace Point and then brought it up to, uh, the area of the hook? It was probably enslaved people. Okay? So we changed the narrative now. Nathaniel Dominique didn't build the Hook Windmill all by himself. He had it built and he supervised it. Okay? And that mill is the most complete mill on Long Island. It has all its working parts, and you can go all the way to the top. Okay? That's it. Have a good one.
Thank you, Hugh. All right, next up, public hearings?
Introductory number 14 of 2025, A Proposed Local Law Amending Village of East Hampton Code, Chapter 278, Zoning, Section 278.7, Board of Appeals, Variances, Special Permits, Fees, A1 through 5, Terms of Office.
Anyone like to be heard? All right, can I get, uh, we're gonna leave that one open?
Introductory number 15 of 2025 is withdrawn. Introductory number 16 of 2025, A Proposed Local Law Amending Village of East Hampton Code, Chapter 42, Planning Board, Section 42.1, Planning Board Established, Membership, Terms of Office, Removal.
Can we just jump back to the withdrawn? I'll, I'll just get a motion to.
Oh, yes.
Can I get a motion to withdraw that?
Let me make a motion to withdraw.
So moved.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, that one was withdrawn. So now you've read the next one. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on that? All right, we're gonna keep that open. And next?
Introductory number 19 of 2025, A Proposed Local Law Amending Village of East Hampton Code, Chapter 267, Section 267.440, Parking Prohibited in Designated Locations, and Section 267.737, Parking Time Limited in Designated Locations.
Can I get, anyone like to be heard? Can I get a motion?
Let me make a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Right.
Our hearing is closed. Uh, next up is public comment about any other issue? Yes, please.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. It's nice to see everyone. Um, nice big space. Uh, my name is Minerva Perez. I'm the executive director of Ola of Eastern Long Island. Um, and I enjoy a really good, um, back and forth conversation with, uh, Mayor Larson. I appreciate that very much. Um, he and I are expected to have kind of a deeper conversation, I think, about this topic, but I cannot wait until July 30th. Uh, there are too many Mondays. There are too many court dates coming up, and this is regarding the ordinance that was, uh, that was changed, the new ordinance for, uh, landscaping law. So let's say leaf blowers, the use of this equipment, um, certain times of the day, certain days of the week and all that type of thing. That law was, uh, that ordinance was passed. It was voted on. It was what, uh, your community wants, and, uh, and we certainly appreciate that. Uh, we respect that. What we're concerned about, uh, in a, in a really grave way right now is the enforcement of it and sort of the way it's rolled out. Uh, if, if the intent of the law is to cut down the noise, the intent of the law is pretty clear by the way people voted on it. Um, the environmentalist that I know that I work with in other contexts, it's about noise pollution. It's about making sure that certain things are done right. Certainly about chemicals, which is great, and I do hope that we're holding everyone to those standards of what their chemical lists are for all of our companies. You know, potentially even for our homeowners at some point, right? It's all about the groundwater. It's all about nitrogen. Let's look at all of it. But right now, if, if the noise situation is what we want to really control, then why not get adequate information out, um, in advance of this? So May 1st rolled around, and it kind of just felt like everyone got slammed. We understand the importance, um, of Spanish language and language access. We certainly understand that we have Ola, we have Tu Princa Local. We have other ways and outlets of making sure that those folks that we know are doing the work are predominantly Spanish speakers. They just happen to be. Maybe one day that'll change, and we'll have other people speaking whatever language that our new immigrants are speaking. But if they're speaking language and we're not getting information out in an adequate fashion and flooding the information cycle so that we do the intent of the law, which is to decrease that and make sure people know, hey, listen, there's a new ordinance. You've got to do these things. You've got to apply by May 1st. You've got to do these things. You've got to make sure you're not, a lot of people don't know June, June, uh, Juneteenth. I'm glad that we have that holiday, but it's kind of a new one for some people. Um, and they got, you know, they got the, the ticket on that day. And then within two days, they're in court. My other question about this is that East Hampton Town gives the option to the officer who's giving that ticket to say you do or you don't have to go to court. We're, you're not making that even a possibility. So these people that are being given this ticket have no other option but to come into court. They're coming into a court space that, uh, they're not pleading not guilty. We, we've been there, so we're kind of seeing that people are pretty much just pleading guilty and paying the fine, you know, to even not have an option to just pay that fine. So you've given them the slap, they're paying the fine. Um, they're getting the message, you know? I, there should have been more information out ahead of time. But now they're in court in a space that is not necessarily, you know, like the easiest thing to do. You're taking a day. Um, if folks are showing up and God forbid they're not wearing the right outfit, uh, I respect the heck out of Judge Tokolsky, but you know, they're coming from the middle of a workday. It can be a really unfortunate experience to come in there, and you want to get that 250 bucks. You want to give them the message. You've done it, but you don't have to drag them into court and make it impossible for them to have, you know, no other choices. I heard a little bell. I don't want to go beyond my time, but we're really concerned. We have 90% Latinos that are showing up. The courtroom is filled. And, um, hey, listen, if you, if you guys want a courtroom in, in East Hampton Village, that could be a separate conversation, but please don't use the Latino landscapers as a way to get some of these things done. I want to make sure that we're looking at these people as human and that we're giving them the information and the ability to pay this fine in another way as they do in East Hampton Town, and I'd like to understand why those decisions were made. I'm done.
Okay. So I'd just like to respond to a couple of things that you said. First of all, this is not about Hispanics. Our board is probably one of the most liberal boards that you have ever seen in any community out here on the East End. We have the first Latino, first Hispanic female on our board. We, uh, had the first Hispanic Day Parade last year in this community. We've also, um, uh, there was something else. I, I lost my chain of thought, but I wanted, this is one of the, the most compet, oh. We were one of the first boards to come out and have an informational sen, uh, session when the Trump administration decided to change all the rules. We were the first community to step up and have that. And I have to say, no disrespect, but Ola was nowhere to be found at that, at that meeting when I requested you to be there. So I take offense to you trying to say that we're picking on Hispanics. Now.
Those were not my words, Mayor. My words are, my word, no, no, no. My words are that because you have that sensitivity, because you were had, because you had a parade, and because you have the first Latina here right now, that that, the fact is that we happen to have, we just happen to have most Latinos that are doing this landscaping work. With that knowledge and your sensitivity, why wasn't there more information out and why are we doing it this way?
I'm, I'm going to address all your points.
Please don't take offense. It's a question.
Well, I am taking offense because do you even have the statistics on how many Hispanic people were issued summonings as opposed to how many non-Hispanic people?
Uh, well, I was there.
You have that data?
Our people were there in the room. We'll get all the data.
No, I'm just asking you. Do you have that data before you stand up here and accuse us?
Well, I'll have Erica Padilla, who's been in the courtroom watching this happen. So I'm not accusing you. I'm asking a question. If asking a question is an accusation, that's not a conversation anymore.
I'm getting to your points, okay?
Please.
Now I'd like the village attorney to address what is our legal requirement to, to implement a new law?
Why the process? I'm asking why the process. That's all.
You had your time. Now let us have our time.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think the speaker, I didn't catch her name.
Minerva, Minerva, sorry. Yeah.
I, I, I think you agree that we've complied with all due process in, in passing this law and giving the required notice for this law. I think we, we've gone above and beyond, my understanding is, of the regular notice provisions by reaching out via social media. We also specifically requested of the town, who are their licensed landscapers and contractors so that we can give extra notice above and beyond the requirement to those landscapers that they were required to comply with the law. We did give in a phase-in period so people would have time to be familiar with the new law once it was passed. And I believe we're exploring, um, enforcement, you know, in court, what kind of pleadings and what kind of measures we can take to make the penalty not be as severe for your first violation, your second violation.
Well, I spoke to the prosecutor yesterday, and he said anybody who shows up who's not registered with the village, that they are then given the opportunity to register, and that, that ticket is dropped. So I don't, are you finished?
Yes.
I'd like, uh, the village administrator to go through the steps that you have done to make people aware of this law.
Ms. Perez, and, and to the mayor's point, it, it does seem like, I apologize, it, it, it really does seem, it's a little insulting on our end for a guy that's called Marcos Baladrona, three feet away from the first, you know, a very well-known immigration lawyer. We've gone through, we've, we've probably done more with this legislation than we've ever done with any other legislation in the last five years, including 1,800 contractors licensed in the town of East Hampton, not just mailed directly once, but twice. You know, we don't have to do that, but we did that on our own because we don't want fines. We want compliance. We just want people to listen to, you know, to, to know our rules and to know that residents are fed up with constant construction, constant hammering of, you know, of hammers and, and saws and, and the never-ending leaf blowers. So this has gotten to a crescendo. We're at, you know, I think we, we've all decided on that one day, Sunday, being enough, and we want people to comply. That's all it's been. We've issued hundreds of warnings. Um, the ticket, by the way, the tickets that you are saying that they're out there, we, we haven't even, you know, given that off, that many. So, uh, I see this as, you know, this is not an English and Spanish issue, and I'm speaking for myself now, not even as the village administrator. This is, we've gone to great lengths to make sure hundreds of emails and phone calls, personal phone calls to other builders who flat out told Village Hall, yeah, we're not really going to do it this year, maybe next year, you know? There's some that said that. I don't know if they're ending up in that, in that courtroom with you, but I know that my staff at Village Hall has been told, ah, we won't get it. You guys don't enforce it anyway. We're enforcing these laws because people want peace and quiet. So from our point of view, we've done not just what we legally have to do, but more than that, reached out at our own expense to make sure that they are not in a courtroom.
Starting in February.
That they have a license. That's it.
Starting in February.
In February, not May. It was February. Mailed it once and mailed it twice again.
I mean, February of, of 2020.
In English and in Spanish, by the way, because we can't tell who, you know, what company, corporate name.
Okay.
Is Spanish-speaking or not.
Sure. So let me, let me just, I, I'd like to jump in. Again, I need to be able to have a conversation about the concerns that we have by what we're seeing. By me speaking, that does not mean I'm insulting you from a Perez to a Baladron to all, you know, it doesn't matter. We're talking about our community.
Well, I'm not aware of that, but you and I sit on the LTV board together.
We don't have to devolve a conversation.
You and I sit on the LTV board together, Minerva. Where was your email to me? Where's a phone call to reach out to me to have a conversation about this?
Right, right now, right now, it's important to have this conversation in a more public space.
Okay, you got it.
It's important. It's important for so many reasons.
You don't even have the data. You don't even have the data.
I'm having a conversation with you right now. I'm not on trial. You're not on trial. We're having a conversation.
You're making it feel that way. You don't even have the data. You're saying 90%.
I'm asking you questions. No, one more question. One more question, Mayor.
Don't, don't.
Please tell me, please just tell me where in Spanish was this posted. Please just tell me. I'm sorry.
You told me 90% of the people who are in court are, are Hispanic.
For this, for this ticket.
Sounds like an accusation that we're picking on Hispanics, and I take offense to that.
That's an observation, not an accusation.
You could have foiled, you could have foiled the data and had it here.
No, there's too many Mondays coming up. I've got to have the conversation right now. Do you understand?
We would have given that to you immediately.
I want to say something as an attorney and as a trustee. What I've seen in my practice, and I don't represent these people because it would be a, uh, uh, conflict. But what I've seen and what I've helped people do is they actually come, they don't understand the rules or they, and they're know they can go to Village Hall, ask for the questions. They can come to me, ask a trustee, ask me the questions. They've been to court, ask for another date, and then they get compliance and then their ticket's good.
They don't really know that though always, but my question to you is how, where did this go out in Spanish? I would just like to know, please.
To all the licensed contractors in the town of East Hampton.
Would you not think that you'd want to put that out just in, in Tu Princa Local, or, you know, you talk about reaching out, Mayor Larson, you've reached out to me in other contexts when you've said, hey, listen, we're working on something. We'd like to make sure that we get the word out, and Ola has gotten the word out in different things. You've reached out to me before. You've, you have my cell number. You have my cell number. If you want, if you want compliance and you want, and you want information to say, hey, listen, let's bring the noise down. We could help with that. We have help with, and many other things that we work on with the village, with the town, and so we, we're happy to do that. In this case, we feel like a step got jumped, like, hey, we're here to help you guys get the word out, to let people know what these processes are. And now we do have lots of Latinos in court that don't know, they don't have another option to not go into court. I'm glad you're kind of investigating other possibilities. But we want to make sure that we're, that we're talking about it and in a public context, not an accusation, just a conversation.
And four years ago, with all due respect, when two of our employees who are Hispanics, right, and, and, and they felt that there were spoils coming into Village Hall regarding targeting them, we called you, and you did not, you weren't, you weren't, you didn't even offer to help us, with all due respect.
I was involved in that conversation. Thank you very much. Yes, I was. Yes, I was. I'll get the emails for you. You weren't hired then. Um, so we'll, we'll talk about that further. So, you know, we're not throwing accusations. We're having a conversation. This is a Village Hall meeting. This is a public conversation. It's a concern.
Timer's off, man.
We're gonna wait until July 30th, but it's kind of a lot of Mondays coming up, so it's important for us to kind of put it out on the record that we are concerned about the enforcement process. We want to help get the word out. We're gonna do that now. We're using our own time and our own staff to, to, to interpret, to translate this, to get it out there. It's not on your website in Spanish, just in terms of making sure that the, that the intent of the law is there. Bring the noise level down. Let the folks know whether they're, that maybe they're not registered yet or licensed yet. Maybe they need this information ahead of time because then we'll also abide by the law, which is keep the noise down, make sure they have the right chemical list, all these kind of things. We want to help with that, but we felt like it kind of jumped over a couple of steps, and we're concerned, and I'm bringing that concern to you. But if I think that just by bringing concern, it's an accusation, I don't want to continue that because we want to have conversations here.
I certainly don't want that.
It can't always be on a cell phone. Sometimes it has to be in a public context. That's all. I appreciate it.
So if the chief could just comment, how many summonses have been issued? Do you have that number off the top of your head?
It was posted in the paper. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it, it was posted last.
Wasn't it like in the twenties?
Yeah, for registration, 20, you had the numbers.
I mean, you're talking about.
But just for registration, but what about the other stuff, the noise, the noise ordinance? I think those are a little bit more, or maybe?
I mean, we also, just so you're aware, so you don't think that this is some sort of target.
I never said it was. I said there was, there wasn't adequate information going out, and the, and the right now the enforcement needs to be, needs to be looked at, which is what you said.
This was also announced in the local papers.
In English.
And I know maybe, you know, some people don't read the local papers, but I'm sure you do. And if you saw this coming down the road, why didn't you?
Is it my job to do the PR for the village? I mean, Sandra Melendez.
I thought, I thought Ola's there to help the Hispanic community.
We did the mailing. Was the mailing in Spanish still?
Yes, English and Spanish.
The mailing was English and Spanish. Also, the way that this works is the town also has an ordinance like this. The town also needs, um, the registration. So if they.
We're not arguing that. We're arguing the enforcement part. The town gives the option for the person to not have to come into court or just pay the fine. You're making it so that everyone must come into court. That's how it is right now.
It's easier for us to go, if you go to court and ask for a new date and then you comply, everything gets.
It's not easier for the people that are, that are coming into court.
I guess, but just paying a fine is not the best thing for them because now they just.
No, no, no. You don't, please don't speak for them in that way. I mean, coming into court is a hardship, and if they have the option, let them have the option to come into court or not, or just pay the fine.
We'll look into it. It's something that we can look into it, but usually just paying the fine is something that a lot of people do without noting. So if they have, get in trouble, they should look for someone, there's another attorney here that can actually like help them, or Ola.
That's ideal. I agree.
Let them know what their options is because not always paying the fine is the best thing for.
But they should have an option. They don't have an option right now. So I'm glad you're looking into it.
So we'll look into it and we'll take that as a consideration, but I just want to, the way it sounded, and I guess it's not, um, an attack from your part, but it did sound like it's just focused to Latino.
It's a concern.
It's not. It's for everybody, and we actually went our way to put it in Spanish and English. I just wanted to make it. Um, and whoever ever needs our help in Spanish and English, we have the capability to do it in the Village Hall.
It's not on your website, and you gave it out, I think, in Spanish and English to let you, the licensed contractors, people that are already work, I mean, the thing is that we don't, you're, you're kind of learning, and you're not learning, we all know it, that there are people, there are mom and pop shops that are coming and doing this work. You know, we'd like to also make sure that, um, that the homeowners, the company owners, I mean, that they also have a deep understanding, so they're not just throwing their workers out and saying, go work on June, Juneteenth in the village of East Hampton. You know, that there should be some responsibility there. I mean, we're trying to help get the word out, but it is not our main responsibility to do that for everyone, but we want to make sure that it's not just falling, people that are in court with the ticket in their name are the, is the guy holding the leaf blower.
But also it's a responsibility of the business owner to know, if I'm going to start working somewhere, I need to comply with the laws of that village.
Of course it is, and the education of that is very important and having that across the board in the village and beyond is what we would try to help to do as well. So we just want to make sure that everyone has the word, that the intent of the law is accomplished without kind of overarching kind of enforcement that we could maybe pull back on a little bit.
And I also want to let know, like, our doors are always open. If someone has a question, if there's a business owner that doesn't understand, and I've done it before, business owner came to me, I don't understand too much of this law, we sat down and we discussed it, we talked about what their needs were. So anybody that.
But this happened pretty quickly in terms of, and suddenly, because people aren't going to know until they're suddenly in court, and that's kind of the message that, or even getting a ticket. Sometimes getting a ticket is the wake-up call and it's like, whoa, I didn't realize the law, now I know the law.
It's the responsibility to know, if I'm working here, I should comply with the laws of where I'm working.
But the enforcement of those laws does not have to require these folks to come into court and not just have to pay a fine.
We're looking to that part.
Thank you. Well, that's the concern.
That's what we can do right now.
That's the major concern. It wasn't about the law being passed, we understand that there was a lawful law that was passed to change it, and we agree with it. It's just about how it kind of rolls out and how we can make sure that we're keeping folks in mind and that our communication of things is not just to the licensed and contracted landscapers, but to the community. You often get information on a parade out to a community, you get it out to the full community and beyond because you want everyone to know what's going on, and that's all we're looking for is like broader communication.
Just, just so I'm clear, right?
Yeah.
We started this rollout in February of 2025. We are now in July of 2025. How long should we just continue to issue warnings?
If you can tell me that you put out to the public in Spanish, at least a couple of times to the public, then I would say, you know, maybe two or three times, it depends on how much compliance you want. If you want compliance and understanding, you do it a lot. If you want it, if you, if you don't have enough time, you do it a few times, but you make sure that you get it out in Spanish to the full, to the full village and beyond because you know workers are coming in.
Is any other board member?
As I understand it, when a law is passed, it's not the onus of the government to tell people the law, full stop. I mean, are we?
You pass laws in public, that's when you tell people the law.
So that's when we tell them.
The law is published.
So for us to continue to tell, and it's also, is it our legal right that we have to tell it in Spanish as well?
It's not an obligation, no, but we, we did notice this law, we did publish it on social media, we did go out of our way to notice it in Spanish and English.
A month of warnings.
To the contractors, and we had a very long rollout period, so everybody would have time to come up to speak.
I mean, things, you know, my son got a ticket the other day, he parked overnight in a non-parking. Did he know the law? No. He paid the fine, he knows the law. I mean, sometimes that's the way you learn the law. Now he tells his friends, don't park there, you know, that's a non-parking. I mean, unfortunately, that's what happens.
Yeah, but if the intent, here, you don't have to do whatever you don't want to do according to the law, but if your community is made up of folks that happen to be speaking Spanish, that are going to be the ones that are going to be doing the leaf blowing and all that, your intention want to be, hey, I want to inform those people, make sure they have it, and if the only way to inform them is giving them a ticket, which I understand that your son got a ticket, now he's learned his lesson, then let that be, now is your son having to go into court for his ticket? Or does he have the option to pay the fine?
No, he paid.
Okay, well then, saying the whole, the whole thing is a combination of things, communication and then enforcement, and then not giving people the option of just paying the fine and making them come into court, which is pretty much either a half-day or full day.
I'm just addressing the first part of communication because, for example, I go out every night at 6:30 and I have printouts and I hand it to everyone, I say, you're not supposed to be doing this. Some of the people that are registered, I see it's Sag Harbor, it's Bridge Hampton, somewhere even farther, so we're supposed to, we're obligated to tell as far and far and far, like, when does it stop? When do people have to realize like this is the law?
I mean, the thing is that we've only got a couple of news outlets, we've got a couple, we've got Two Prensa Local, which is an amazing news outlet, only in Spanish, it's electronic, they would be happy to publish a press release in Spanish, and everybody gets that, and it's the easiest thing in the world, it's like boom, and everyone's got it in Spanish. Ola has certainly published a bunch of things that we can to support.
So can Ola do it? So can you do that? Can you contact them?
Well, I, I have to now, but the thing is that we are happy to do that if we, if we can have a conversation about that and know, but we also want to make sure that the onus, yes, should be on the village to say, hey, we want compliance, we want everyone to know, and my gosh, who's doing this leaf blowing? Well, you know what, it's probably going to be some people that are speaking Spanish, that's not insulting.
But you're bringing grace into it.
It's a reality. No, 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 it's called communication, and yes, you could, you could get it out in Two Prensa and get it out.
Minerva, I have to, I have to interrupt again, we started this in February, we've mailed twice to every registered company in East Hampton Town.
Yeah, but if they're already registered, then they're registered.
And we did it in Spanish and English.
But those are already registered companies.
And then it was in the front page of both newspapers.
But you say both newspapers, there's more than two newspapers.
Yeah, but these are the ones that show up in our meetings and they're the ones who print what's in it, and again.
They serve this community to Two Prensa Local.
Ola reads the local newspapers.
If we could not interrupt each other for the minutes.
Sure, you got it.
You could have taken the bull by the horns if you, this concerns, and you could have put it out. You could have done that.
I think the village could do that in Spanish.
We did it in Spanish, we did it in English.
Community, that's all I'm saying, the community.
You said we didn't?
I'm saying for the full community.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, we can go on and on with this, so.
I'm volunteering, I would like to work with you, and we can work together to put something out in Spanish. I don't speak Spanish, I wish I did, but to the outlets that you think are necessary, I'm happy to do that.
There's only, there's only a couple of them, and the thing is that we're happy to help, but we also feel like all villages and towns can, you know, we can just communicate those things out.
But the two things I'm hearing is that they don't have a choice to go to court or not to go to court, and the second thing is that you would like to, to see it get out in Spanish to the proper news outlets.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm happy to help.
I thank you for that and I appreciate it, I'll work with you gladly on that.
And the other, you know, you never responded to my last text last night. If, if I knew you were coming, I would have had Brian Lester here to address what's going on in the court for you.
It was kind of late, so I didn't want to text you too, you and I were texting, I think, it wasn't that late, it was like seven o'clock or something like that.
Right.
And I wasn't sure, and I thought, you know what, I'd like, yeah.
Again, there's another great example, you have my cellphone, I respond, you can text me, I respond to your text.
This is a public conversation, Mayor.
I'm just saying.
This is a public conversation, Mayor.
Absolutely.
I'm here in a public context representing the organization that I work for.
I understand that I could have had more information here for you.
But it's okay, but again, I'm asking the questions now, you're giving me information now, I'm learning from the.
But we still don't even have the statistics for you, I could have certainly had that if I knew you were coming.
I wasn't going to ask you for that seven o'clock at night, I'm not that rude, but we can learn that together.
No, it is, but this is important.
Listen, I appreciate all the time, but I don't want to take any more time.
This is important that we have this conversation, so.
I know it's important, but it's a comment, not, like, we're not required.
I'm not cutting you off because it's an important conversation.
I appreciate that, Mayor, I do appreciate that, and thank you, I don't want to take any other time, but because the questions were coming, I was going to stand here as long as you want me to, but I'd like to follow up in all the ways that we talked about, I'm just glad that, that we've been able to talk about it as something that we're concerned about. No accusations, but just, just a little bit more time on it to talk with you about it in a deeper way, and we appreciate that very much.
Yeah, I'm very sensitive towards this because we really go out of our way to help everybody in this community, so.
But you know what, but Mayor, I do too with Ola, and guess what, every once in a while, I let, you know, someone will come to me and say, Ola sucked with that, they really did a terrible job with that. It kills me because that's our mission, but it means in that moment, I have to stop and say, wait a minute, what did I do there? Could I have done it better? Let me talk with my team, you know, it's just a conversation, that's all. There's a lot of great stuff the village is doing and we acknowledge that all the time, we really do. This is a conversation that I was kind of like a little bit blindsided by the enforcement part of it, not so much the, the passing of the law, we knew that, but in terms of, you know, what the next steps were, I was a little blindsided by that, and I could have helped a bit more had I known, so that's all, we'll keep talking.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, have a safer.
Anyone else? Sue?
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and while I appreciate, Mayor.
I mean, I know who you are, if you could just identify yourself for the clerk.
Oh, I beg your pardon, Susan Manu, I'm an attorney in town. I don't work for anyone, I have my own practice, and I see you in court often, and so I have a couple of points that I'd like to make. First, I would like to mention that Minerva has a position here where she heads an organization. Luckily, well, luckily for her, she heads that organization, for me, I do not, so I will, I can speak frankly. When I go to court, when we go to court, to say that, which I do believe that none of you intended to, you didn't sit at your meeting and say, oh, let's us go after the Latinos in town and give them $300 tickets because we don't like Latinos. I don't for one moment think that. So let's, we're all professionals here, Mr. Larson and I have known each other for 30 years, and if you are telling me that 20 tickets were issued, I believe that's what the chief said, did I mishear that? Did you say, chief?
I said I don't have the correct numbers, I said it was issued in Star last week, I don't have those numbers exactly.
But you thought that it was about 20?
Only 20 tickets.
It was more than 20 tickets. Well, I have.
Different codes for non-hispanic violations.
Right, I have right here, five of them, and I sat in court, and I can tell you that the court was full of, guess what, Latinos, that's who was there. So your ordinances impact Latinos. I'm not saying you meant to do that.
And it also impacts non-Hispanics. Again, I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked Minerva, do you, do you have any statistics of what you're talking about?
I'm not going to answer that question because.
You don't?
No, no, okay.
So you're just standing up here, giving us your speculation.
No, I'm not giving you speci, don't, don't.
You certainly are.
Do not condescend to me.
You certainly are, but go right ahead.
Do not condescend to me.
Go right ahead, I just wanted to make that very clear.
It is not clear at all.
For the newspapers that are here, that you don't have any data and you're sitting here giving us speculation. But go ahead.
I'm going to continue with my speculation of my own eyes. So, I was in court and the entire courtroom was filled with Latinos. They were responding to tickets that they had gotten. I spoke to the court officers, I spoke to the prosecutor, and by the way, Brian Lester knew about this meeting today, besides, I texted him yesterday to ask him if he was going to be here, so if he could have been here, he would have been here, but he's not here. So, if you think that I'm accusing this law of unfairly impacting Latinos, you are accurate. So don't talk to me about statistics, come one day to a Monday, no, 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 don't, 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 listen to me. I'm in court, the lawyer here is in court, the court is full on two days with Latinos, one, parking, speeding tickets or tickets or whatever tickets the town issues for VNT. Then the town is full another day, now, on these violations issued to the workers that do all of the, most of, I'm not going to say all, most of manual labor in this town, who happen to be Latinos, who are facing not only these tickets that cost $300 that you were saying they were notified of, none of them knew about it, and they're petrified. Are you insensitive to that, what's going on here? They're frightened to come to court, and then they have to listen to Judge Sikolski say, you have a T-shirt on, I'm outraged, don't come to court. This, this is the Latino population who cleans all of the houses. The noise that people are objecting to in the village are building by the wealthiest people in this town. This law impacts the poorest people in this town. How can you be insensitive to this? Brian Lester, he comes to court, he understands this actually. The judge understands this, he understands this, he understands how this impacts these Latinos, they're need, oh, notice, let me speak to you of the notice. I understand that the notice that you think was legal was that you published this in East Hampton Star, your, your, your paper of record, and you also put it on Instagram. I'm on Instagram, I'm ashamed, I said this at last meeting in the morning and in the evening to cheer myself up. I have never, and I'm on it all the time, Latinos are not necessarily on Instagram. The courts are full of sufficient notice. You're asking, are you required to notify the people impacted by your violations? The answer is, yes, you are, and the courts have gone up all the way to the Supreme Court on this issue of notice. So if the people who are being impacted on this, the poorest people who do all the work or the most of the work in our town are impacted by a $300 ticket and having to change their clothes before they go to East Hampton Justice Court, then let me tell you, there's something wrong there. Now, the word is spreading, people are getting aware because they're having to pay $300 tickets. Now there's been a, a bit of a lack because Mr. Lester, I believe, I'm not, I haven't confirmed this because I wasn't in court, have said, you do not have to pay the $300 non-registration ticket if you haven't registered, but now that you know, you're required to be registered, and then come back with your registration, and then we will dismiss, not And then come back with your registration and then we will dismiss, not the noise violation, we will dismiss," which they also didn't know about, "but we will then dismiss it and you can be registered." So you think that you had enough time and you said, "Another person in your office said that the notice was being given by police officers." Here's how the notice was being given by police officers that I'm aware of, only that I'm aware of. Here's a ticket for $300.
It's not true. The entire month, the entire month, and this is the other problem. You stand up here before us and you don't even, you don't have any of the facts.
Don't be silly.
You could call us and ask us, all of April, the police department put, gave everybody warnings for the entire month of April. They put them on the windshields of cars, on trucks parked along the streets, they stopped people, they explained it to them, they gave them warnings.
In Spanish.
Over 150 warnings were issued in the month of April, so.
I thought only 20 tickets were issued.
Oh, you're talking about warnings?
Those are tickets, the ones you keep holding up, those are tickets. Let me explain what a summons is, if I may. A summons is something, do I need to do that for you or do you understand what a summons is?
I understand.
Do you understand the difference between a summons and a warning? I'm just checking because you seem confused.
You're checking, you're checking if I understand the difference.
You seemed confused when I said they were issued warnings.
Of all I am, is not confused.
You just asked, you said only 20 were issued, I'm telling you, warnings were issued. Verbal warnings and flyers put on people's vehicles in Spanish and in English, so.
May I ask you?
I'm getting really frustrated with you, so.
Please don't be frustrated, I would hate you to be frustrated because I want to ask you a question. Are you telling me that the people that came to court, that I spoke to, that the court officers spoke to, who said they knew nothing about your law before they were handed a ticket for $300, are you telling me that those people just, what, didn't get the news that they had to be registered?
That's a question you should ask them.
No.
I can't speak for people that you speak to and you come here and you tell me these stories, which I don't even know if it's true what you're saying.
I know, you don't, you don't, oh, because I, that you have dealt with for 30 years, you have known me to tell untruths?
Well.
I could, we won't go there, but let me ask you something.
Another three minutes.
Let me ask you something, I'll stop, let me ask you something. Are you telling me that the people who told me that they knew nothing of this law should have known but didn't know, and that filled two days that I was there? So the way that this is all resolved always, unfortunately, is by lawsuits and depositions and that sort of thing. I don't want this for this village, I don't want this for this town, I don't want to have anything to do with that, so I'm here to warn you.
Oh, you're warning us?
I'm warning you, yes.
Okay.
That you are violating the civil rights of a large number of people. And now I will sit down and thank you for the pleasure of addressing you and don't come up with the whole, like I don't have the statistics.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Well, I just want to make it clear.
Can I just jump a second? Could I ask our attorney to please tell us about the civil rights violations that we were just accused of?
Yeah, there are no civil rights violations.
Jesus.
We passed these laws lawfully, we gave all the notice that due process requires, there's nothing wrong with this procedure that we've undertaken. There's nothing wrong with the impact that it has, and that's all I have to say about the civil rights violations, thank you, thank you for the warning.
Sorry, Karen.
No, I would just say, I mean, your accusation that the law is targeting Latinos, the law is targeting noise, I'll stop, that's what we're targeting.
Okay, I just want to say something, and as you mentioned that we always in court, that court is not just for East Hampton Village, it's for East Hampton Town. Our population of Latinos is really high, so no matter what day you go, there's always gonna be a lot of Latinos in that court. And so just saying that just this law itself is creating that, I think that's not correct, but that's my opinion, just leave it there, I don't want it here.
All right, is there anybody else we'd like to be heard? All right, that ends public comment, now we're gonna talk about property that, we have real property on Panago that, Billy, would you like to update us on that?
Good morning, Mayor, members of the board, Billy Hayjack for the village.
Hard to hear you, Bill.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, Billy Hayjack for the village. So the board had a brief discussion at the last board meeting and you were to continue it at this meeting, giving trustees an opportunity to visit the site. I did visit the property with a couple of trustees and we actually did speak with one of the neighbors who happened to be home at the time. And, I mean, I have nothing more to report, other than the village did obtain an appraisal of the property. We have an up-to-date, modern survey and it's just a decision that the trustees, you know, should make at this point as to whether or not you'd like to sell the property. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to.
Anybody have any questions?
Try to answer them.
No.
Do we want to move forward with this and sell it?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, just for the, I went to visit the property, there's, there's no, we can't viable usage, yeah.
There's no real value for the village?
So that's the, that's the comment I was gonna make, it appears that this property doesn't have any value to the village, it can't be used in any way that's meaningful to the village, it's just excess and surplus.
Yes, that's correct, that's my, that's my.
Does everybody agree?
Yes.
You can't access it, by the way, too, so there's no way.
I mean, you can access, it has frontage on Panago Road, so you can technically, you can access, so you can walk onto it.
It's not meaningful access, we can't get any vehicles on there, can we?
It's a path to nowhere.
It's only 30 feet wide at where it meets Panago Road, it narrows and then gets wide again towards the rear.
It was meant to be a road, correct?
That's correct, it was meant to provide access from Panago Road to the cul-de-sac at Egypt Close. But for that purpose, there are developed residential properties between Egypt Close and where this property ends. And even if it were to be a public street, it doesn't have the adequate width, a normal public street right-of-way is 50 feet wide.
So Billy, are you saying it can't be used for the original purpose with which it was retained by the village?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm in favor of selling it.
Okay.
Yes.
So let's move forward.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Bill, we're gonna go into motions and resolutions?
Resolution number 254 of 2025, resolved at the regular meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Village of East Hampton for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, be and are hereby established as follows. Regular meetings on the third Friday and work sessions as needed on the first Thursday of each month at 11:00 a.m. to be held at the Emergency Services Building at 1 Cedar Street, East Hampton. Further resolved that any additional or special meeting may be called, canceled, or adjourned as permitted by law and be it further resolved that the mayor may reschedule any of the above scheduled meetings upon proper posting, publication, and notifications as required by law.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 255 of 2025, authorize payment in advance of audit claims for public utility services, postage, freight, and express charges, medical insurance premiums, employee reimbursements, payroll processing fees, and credit card payments for the 2025-2026 fiscal year.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 256, approve employees and appointed officers' contracts, amendments to employee contracts, separation agreements, and salary schedule effective August 1st of 2025. Members and chairs, one term as chairpersons, of various committees, official depositories, official newspaper, and professional consultants as listed.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 257, 2025, appoint Police Chief Jeffrey Erickson as the village liaison to East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 258, appoint Police Chief Jeffrey Erickson as the village liaison to Town of East Hampton Town Anti-Bias Task Force.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 259, appoint Linda Byer as registrar at an annual salary of $1,000 and Gabrielle McKay as deputy registrar at an annual salary of $600.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 260, reappoint Hugh King as village historian at no additional compensation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 261, reappoint John McGurk as chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals and James McMullen as vice chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, effective August 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 262, reappoint James McMullen as member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 263, reappoint Joseph Rose as member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 264, appoint David Driscoll as chair of the Planning Board, effective August 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 265, appoint Dennis Lamoneas as vice chair of the Planning Board, effective August 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 266, appoint Lisa Larson as member of the Planning Board, effective August 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse, passed and carried.
Resolution number 267, reappoint Robert Caruso as chair of the Design Review Board and Kristen Corwin as vice chair of the Design Review Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 268, reappoint Robert Caruso as member of the Design Review Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 269, reappoint Kristen Corwin as member of the Design Review Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 270, reappoint Cheryl Dayton as member of the Design Review Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 271, appoint Drew Smith as chief lifeguard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 272, approve employment of Aaron Arkinson as part-time code enforcement officer at $40 an hour, effective retroactively to July 1st, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 273, approve the budget transfer, Schedule 8, Reference 8 and 9, dated July of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 274, authorize the transfer of up to $1 million from the undesignated fund balance to the Capital Reserve Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 275, authorize the transfer of up to $500,000 from the undesignated fund balance to the EBLR Fund, Employee Benefit Leave Reserve Fund.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 276, authorize the transfer of up to $1,500,000 from the undesignated fund balance to the assigned unappropriated fund balance.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 277, resolve the 2024-2025 village budget is hereby amended to increase appropriations from the assigned unappropriated fund balance in the amount of $51,226 for expenditures related to sidewalk repairs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 278, resolve the 2024-2025 village budget is hereby amended to increase estimated revenue and appropriations in the amount of $203,233.50 for expenditures related to highway equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 279, reauthorizing the village attorney's office to perform the actions listed in Resolution number 157 of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 280, resolve that the village attorney's office is hereby appointed to represent the Board of Appeals, Planning Board, and Design Review Board of the Village of East Hampton in actions and proceedings to which the board is a party and the village attorney's office is further authorized to appear before the Board of Appeals of the Village of East Hampton as an advocate on behalf of the Village of East Hampton.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 281, resolve that Kalen Verity be and is hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to notify the New York State Employees Retirement System and the Suffolk County Civil Service Department that during 2025-2026 fiscal year, the village administrator, the treasurer, and mayor Jerry Larson may sign all payrolls for the Village of East Hampton.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 282, resolve during the 2025-2026 fiscal year, the following individuals are authorized to access the payroll production system, Mayor Jerry Larson, Marcos Balladron, Dominique Cummings, Kalen Verity, and Lindsay La Pointe.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 283, resolve that the village administrator and/or village attorneys be and are hereby authorized to obtain within budgetary limits an appraisal or update thereof of any village property, be it real or personal, and be it further resolved that the village treasurer and the village administrator be and hereby is authorized to obtain within budgetary limits actuarial services.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 284, resolve that the responsibility for administration of the investment program of the Village of East Hampton is delegated to the village administrator and the village treasurer to invest monies, designate banks and/or trust companies as depositories of the Village of East Hampton, and hereby be authorized to contract for the purchase of investments or establish in any bank or trust accounts. And be it further resolved that the current investment policy and cash management policy are hereby adopted and ratified.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 285, authorizing the village administrator to invest all funds of the Village of East Hampton for the 2025-2026 fiscal year pursuant to law.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 286, resolve that the following banks or trust companies operating within the Village of East Hampton be and they are hereby designated as depositories of Village of East Hampton funds for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, Dine Bank, Chase Bank, MBIA, New York Class, and East Hampton Financial Group, Lo Sap, and be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to enter into agreements with the above banks and trust companies and to amend such agreements from time to time, which agreements provide for the ordinary and necessary banking service incident to acting as a depository, and be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to enter into agreements with the banks and trust companies designated by the above-mentioned financial institutions to serve as a custodial bank, holding collateral to secure deposits of Village of East Hampton funds held by these institutions, and be it further resolved that the preceding paragraphs be made part and parcel of the investment policy for the Village of East Hampton.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 287, whereas the Village of East Hampton enters into numerous professional service agreements, public works, and purchase contracts, and whereas during the course of performance of some of those contracts, it is necessary to execute amendments, modifications, and change orders within the scope of construction services and when time is of the essence, now therefore on motion of trustee and seconded by a trustee, be it resolved that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to execute amendments, change orders, and/or modifications to professional service agreements, public works contracts, and purchase contracts that in total do not exceed 10% of the total contract price.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 288 of 2025, adopt the procurement policy, no changes from current policy.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 289, approve the purchase of vehicles and equipment for the East Hampton Village Police Department, Department of EMS, and Department of Public Works as listed in David J. Cox's memo dated June 27th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Number 290, approve amendment to special event permit fees as set forth in the Village of East Hampton Special Event Permit Application.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 291, authorize the appointment of Perillo and Hill LLP as village attorneys at an annual sum of $115,000, effective August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2026.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution number 292, approve the $5,001.74 quote from Ben Kropinski Builders for the split rail fence at the Nature Trail.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All in favor?